Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, September 28th meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted that you're all here with us. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baruch?
Here.
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Oliver is on her way. We've got a message. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mr. Z. Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Are these working at all as a microphone?
Can you all hear us out there or not?
I hear no amplification.
Can you hear us? All right, so why don't we see if we can get the microphones working just a bit better? And maybe in the meantime, we'll raise our voice for folks in the audience. Again, welcome to the Monday, September 28th meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted you all are here. Why don't we go ahead and start with a proclamation? I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor, who is an EMT, to read this, if I could, or make the proclamation.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the City of Falls Church is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes of the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,755 people in the United States in 2013, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 369,500 home fires, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working, usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead, and whereas half of the home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep, and whereas Falls Church City residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home, including alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing, and whereas Falls Church City residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Falls Church City first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education, and whereas Falls Church City residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep," every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely.
Now, therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all citizens to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home, including the basement, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts during Fire Prevention Week.
Mayor Tarter, members of council, we're joined by our Fire Marshal, Mr. Tom Polera, and the Chief of our Volunteer Fire Department, Mr. Kevin Henry, Chief Henry, and so they're here to accept the proclamation. I don't know if you have any comments as well?
Chief Henry? Thank you very much for recognizing Fire Prevention Week, October 4th through 10th. Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department, we're here for several school visits and community engagement intended to spread the message of public safety, with the theme this year being "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep." Installation of working smoke detectors saved many lives. We'll also cap off Fire Prevention Week with open house at the fire station from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturday, October 10th. We'll have station tours, demonstration of apparatus, fire safety discussions, opportunity for question and answer, and activities and a lot of fun. So if you're available between 10:00 and 4:00 on Saturday, October 10th, please stop by. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you both for all your good work. We really appreciate your fine efforts on behalf of the city. Why don't you come on up and we'll give you this proclamation, and maybe we'll get a photo. I think they now want you to come on back here for the photos, so come on up if you could.
And Mayor, and members of council, if I could also just note, as Mr. Polera is leaving the dais, as part of our ongoing efforts for Emergency Preparedness Month, Tom has initiated new outreach to the faith community and last Tuesday night held a meeting with many of our faith leaders in the community called, for an event called "Praise and Preparedness." And it's really about an effort to engage with our faith leaders, both provide them service on emergency preparedness directly after the events in Charleston, but also to solicit their involvement in our emergency response in terms of volunteers, in terms of the many resources that our faith community has, and they can help the community in time of need. And so I just want to thank Mr. Polera for that. There was an agreement to meet quarterly as we go forward, to continue that engagement, and only good things can come from that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, before we allow our folks to depart...
Okay, our next item is our I-66 presentation. We'd like to welcome Mr. Donahue. Thank you very much for coming up. You're based in Richmond, I believe, so I know you've been spending quite a lot of time up here, and you spent time with some of us individually, members of council, the Vice Mayor, Ms. Oliver, and others on council. So we appreciate all your efforts on this. I know it's a difficult task to try to, you know, speak with every jurisdiction and try to meet the different needs of the different folks in the area. So thank you for coming up, all your efforts, and we look forward to what you have to say tonight.
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be with you here this evening. As the mayor indicated, I'm really here to talk about the McAuliffe Administration's proposal to transform I-66 inside the Beltway. I'm going to walk through the specifics of the proposal, what we believe the benefits and impacts of the proposal will be, but before I get to that, there are some slides I want to walk through that talk about really the context of I-66 and really how it operates today and functions, as well as upcoming changes that are going to happen to that corridor, whether or not this project moves forward, and then also really, just as importantly, help explain why this is something the administration is moving forward. And so really, everywhere we went, that was just an issue that was raised, raised time and again, and a lot of times, some folks said, "Please don't let this corridor end up like the 95-395 corridor, where you make this improvement and then it basically stops kind of halfway to where a lot of people using that road are trying to go." And so that was really kind of one of the major driving impetuses for us to start looking at what are ways to improve this, you know, corridor all the way from Route 15 outside the Beltway to the bridge at the Theodore Roosevelt Bridge there in Roslyn. One of the other things is, as we look at inside the Beltway, we see a lot of job growth at both ends of that corridor. So the demographics project that in Tysons and along the Dulles corridor, you're going to have about 70% job growth in the future, and then the Roslyn-Bolston corridor, as well as downtown DC, you're going to have about 25% job growth. And as you look, take a look at this map here, there's really two ways of moving between those two points, and that's the orange line, which is very, very crowded in the morning, and then there's I-66. And we really need to find ways to be able to facilitate additional movement in this corridor to allow this region to remain economically competitive and to facilitate the future growth that's coming down the pipe for Northern Virginia, particularly in the Tysons, as well as the Roslyn-Bolston corridors here in Virginia. One of the other things that the administration is really taking a look at is, we're on the verge with the I-66, both inside and outside the Beltway projects, of creating a regional express lanes network, where folks will be able to travel by themselves for a toll, in a carpool for free, in a van, or in a bus, from Stafford to DC to Haymarket and points in between at 55 miles per hour, both once these projects are implemented, but also well into the future. And that's really going to be a change for this region, because there will be a way to be able to provide a reliable trip for people through all modes of transportation, really, transit, driving by yourself, carpooling, to get from different points in this region, which is something we've only really been able to provide today with Metro. And we're all looking forward to the opening of the Silver Line Phase 2, but I think for a while, that's probably going to be the last major expansion we see, at least for a number of years. And we're all working to get eight-car trains to address a lot of the crowding on the orange line, and I think that's something we'll be able to move forward with, but after that, it's going to be a number of years before you see likely additional expansions to the system. And then just as importantly, there's many parts of this region where candidly, the densities don't exist and may never exist to actually support successful Metro Rail ridership, and this hot lanes network is really a complementary type of transportation that will really work with the metro system, provide a fast, reliable trip throughout the region for folks to really move around to different job centers and activity centers. With that, I want to talk a little bit just about I-66, and I want to start by saying, I-66 inside the Beltway is different than any other interstate in the United States. It is the only road that during the rush hours, particularly in that really heavily traveled direction, someone driving by themselves cannot use the facility. That means, because it's different than a lot of other interstates in America, we have to look at solving problems on this corridor differently than we might on other interstates where people can drive by themselves today. That's a really big difference, and we've done a lot of research, and as best as we can tell, this is the only freeway in the entire country that operates this way. So it's really going to take some unique solutions to be able to address the transportation needs in this corridor. One of the other things that makes I-66 pretty unique is, most interstates end at another interstate or an interchange, or they're circles, like the Beltway, 495. I-66, once you cross the river and head into DC, no matter which way you go, there's three spurs you can take. You end up at something like this, and this is a traffic light. This is Constitution and 23rd. Apparently, when the Google vehicle drove through here and took this picture, it happened to be on green, but it's red just as much as it's green. And that really means that you can do certain things to let more cars drive on that road, but at a certain point, you hit the reality of a red light inside the District of Columbia. You can hit it here at 23rd and Constitution. You can hit it at, I believe it's E and 19th, if you take the East Street Expressway, or if you go all the way over to the Watergate, you hit it at Virginia and 25th. So you're going to hit a red light once you get into DC 50% of the time, no matter what we do on the Virginia side of the river here. So that's, again, another kind of different thing that makes I-66 function unlike most interstates across the country. We do have a lot of transit service inside the Beltway for I-66. Fortunately and unfortunately, it's wildly popular and therefore really, really crowded. So here's Roslyn, you know, during rush hour, and so inside the Beltway, there are generally relatively good travel options, but we need more of them to relieve the pressure and the crowding that exists. And then for a lot of people who use I-66 inside the Beltway, they actually start their trips somewhere much further outside of the Beltway, and those folks actually tend to have relatively limited transit options to be able to travel to jobs in this area, as well as in DC, which means a lot of them are going to end up driving unless we provide additional travel choices to those folks. And then this is probably, you know, one of the most starkest realities, is this section is probably one of the most densely populated and highly developed sections of interstate in Virginia. And so you have retaining walls, decks, and a very expensive real estate that parallels this corridor. This is the deck that goes over I-66 and Roslyn. As you can see, there's about a 25-foot retaining wall there carrying Lee Highway next to I-66. That means our ability to widen this road all the way to the river, as some have advocated for a long, long time, is severely constrained and will cost hundreds of millions of dollars that quite candidly, we don't have and need to use on other projects. There's a lot of just physical constraints that, again, hinder our ability to do what we might do in this corridor if it were not this one. With that, there are a few changes to the 66 corridor that have been in the, you know, pipeline for a while and are starting to take effect, and really, they have some very significant impacts on the commuters. The most significant one is the increase in occupancy requirements. This has been adopted regional policy since 2010. The Regional Transportation Planning Board, which consists of Northern Virginia, the district, as well as local jurisdictions from the Maryland side, adopted increasing the occupancy requirements from 2 to 3 in 2020, back in the 2009-2010 period, as a part of the Long Range Transportation Plan. And when they did that, the part of this change was to allow this region to comply with federal air quality standards, which has a large implication for the ability of this region to use its federal funds for transportation. So this change has been adopted policy for about half a decade now, and going back and saying, you know, "We changed our minds at this point" would be very, very difficult because it was a strategy and tool used by the region to meet those air quality standards. And if we took that change out, we'd candidly have to come up with another strategy to show we were somehow otherwise reducing emissions and moving more people and less cars. And I'm not sure what we would be able to demonstrate at this moment to do that, and I doubt Maryland and DC would go along with undoing this change if asked, because it would have severe implications for their ability to use federal funds in their jurisdictions. So again, this is something that's going to be happening by 2020 on I-66, both inside and outside the Beltway, and it is going to have real implications for commuters, and we think this project that we're proposing actually can help address some of the impacts that might exist for current HOV2 users. The next change that's going to be happening is, we are taking a look at the hybrid fuel exemption. Again, this is, under federal law, HOV lanes are to be built to facilitate carpooling, and you must take all steps as a State Department of Transportation to ensure that buses and people with two, three, or four in the car can have a fast, reliable trip. Now, the federal law also says if there's excess capacity in there, you can allow clean fuel vehicles to use the road unless, basically, their use starts to slow down the facility so the carpoolers and buses aren't operating about 45 or 50 miles per hour. Currently on 66, we do not meet that performance threshold in several different locations, and so when we first allowed the hybrids to use the 66 HOV lanes, the then commissioner had to enter into a binding agreement with the Federal Highway Administration that said, "If the road ever stopped performing up to par, we would start to take steps to really, basically, address those implications, including limiting and then prohibiting the use of the facility by hybrid vehicles." In 2011, we stopped issuing new hybrid plates for people to be able to use 66, so we kind of capped the number of people and types of people who could use 66 with hybrid vehicles. And unfortunately, that has done very little to address the degradation that we see on I-66, and so you still see those slow speeds in many portions of the HOV lanes, and we, in turn, now have to talk to the feds, and they're telling us, "At this point, the only step remaining is to remove the hybrid vehicles from that corridor and the facility." And so that will also be happening in the next year to two years along this corridor, both, again, inside and outside the Beltway, and that's a binding federal requirement. Also, at this point, we've started to make some changes to try and facilitate better bus service along the 66 corridor. We just started the Bus on Shoulder Pilot Program. I think we still have some more work to do to get more of the transit agencies using that system, and we're really monitoring the ability for that to speed up buses throughout that corridor, but I think it's a very important step that we've taken to really help incentivize and improve transit service on the I-66 corridor and facility. And then, lastly, a lot of the westbound congestion is going to be addressed when the Spot Improvement Number 2 opens, which will provide, basically, from Washington Boulevard to the Dulles Connector Road split with 66, four through lanes there to that merge. So you'll have two lanes going off to 66 in the Beltway, and then two lanes going to the Dulles Connector Road, rather than kind of the two and three lanes we've had in the past, where a lot of people get on from Bolston and it gets kind of backed up there. And we expect that's going to open early next year? She's nodding, so that means yes. And so those are some of the things that are already happening to the corridor. That's part of, you know, and also how the corridor functions and operates today. But what we're proposing is actually something that was developed by the McDonnell Administration over a two-and-a-half-year period, working with the local jurisdictions and the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. They actually did a very, very detailed study of I-66 inside the Beltway from April of 2011 until August of 2013. And in this, they analyzed numerous types of roadway improvements, tolling, HOV, capacity expansion, different transit expansion, Metro Rail buses, new bus routes, improved service on existing bus routes, as well as bicycle and pedestrian improvements. They did this in an iterative fashion, and so in 2012, they published about a 100-page report that walked through each of the analyzed types of improvements and what they expected it to achieve, using the regional travel demand model, and then working with local staff and the commission, they actually kind of picked the best of the best, if you will, out of all those different improvements, and then in August of 2013, published a refined package of improvements that identified what they thought was the most cost-effective roadway improvements, roadway management strategies, and transit enhancements. Very candidly, we just took that proposal almost whole cloth, and that's what we are going to be proposing for I-66 inside the Beltway. So this slide really walks through what the administration's proposal is, and I'll discuss it as well. We want to convert the 66 facility during rush hour in both directions to dynamic toll lanes, where high occupancy vehicle users have free access to the roadway, and those driving by themselves for the first time will have access to the facility, but they will have to pay a toll. That toll will vary based on what's necessary to be able to provide a free or a fast and reliable trip for the carpoolers and bus service along that corridor to really help us move more people through the 66 corridor, both to Arlington and DC, but also out in the morning and, you know, back in in the evening, because we're really starting to see heavier traffic flows in both directions. Rush hour's starting to get more and more balanced, and that will only increase as the Tyson's corner area develops in the future. Unlike other dynamic toll lane projects, we're proposing this would be a publicly-operated and managed facility, and so we would not be partnering with a private party, and we would take all excess toll revenues after paying for the operations and maintenance of this facility, and would provide them to the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission to select multimodal improvements that help move more people through this corridor. So that could be enhanced bus service, improved access to Metro Rail stations, Metro Rail capital improvements, other bicycle and pedestrian improvements, as well as kind of roadway improvements to help address impacts from the tolling along I-66. We are also, the last component of the project, is we are proposing that we will implement the tolling and these multimodal improvements for a period of about five years, and then we will come back and evaluate their effectiveness at addressing the eastbound congestion that remains where the Dulles Connector Road and 66 merge, and you basically have four lanes of freeway dropped to two, and about three-quarters of a mile, and we're going to evaluate that to see if the congestion is still there. If in five years, we evaluate and the congestion is gone, then we won't be doing anything else to the 66 corridor. We'll just continue to provide the revenues to the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission that will then reinvest them back in this region, in this corridor. If we do see that there's still congestion after the tolling and the multimodal improvements have been implemented, then the state would keep a portion of those toll revenues, some amount. We're doing some financial analysis now to determine what that would need to be. We would use that to sell toll revenue bonds, and we would widen I-66 from the Dulles Connector Road to the Bolston exit. And I'm going to walk through each of the things I've just talked about in more detail in future slides. But that, in a nutshell, is the three major components of this project, and we really think that it can do a lot to move more people through this corridor. I do want to say, before I walk through the specifics, I'm under no illusions that this is anyone's idea of a perfect project. Candidly, I think if you take a look at 66 inside the Beltway, it's the most contested and negotiated piece of pavement in the country, certainly in Virginia, I believe the country. And what I believe this proposal is, is a pragmatic incremental approach that can help move more people through a corridor where we need to do just that, to facilitate the continued growth and competitiveness and quality of life in this area. So again, I'm sure if I, you know, went to any single jurisdiction here and said, "Tell me how you'd improve 66," it wouldn't be what's written on this slide, but I think what we have here is a mix of different perspectives and other things that work overall for this region and can really help improve this corridor. As I mentioned, McDonnell Administration did a very detailed analysis. They anticipate that a project like this would be able to, in the future, move 40,000 more people through this corridor compared to essentially not implementing this project in the future. That's all with eight-car trains kind of already in place, and so this is a significant ability to help move more people through this corridor. To put 40,000 in perspective, because I often think in transportation, without context, the numbers really mean nothing. Lane of interstate can carry about 2,000 cars an hour when it's performing well, but this project effectively has the ability to move 10 lanes of interstate traffic in the morning and another 10 lanes of interstate traffic in the evening, which is a pretty significant improvement if you take a look at this corridor and the job growth that's going to happen, as well as looking at really the kind of context in which it exists. There are many who say we should, you know, widen I-66 to eight lanes and just run it to the river, and then when you get to the bridge, it's DC's problem. We think that's a pretty unrealistic and not a great idea to move forward, because it won't actually solve the problems, but we think this project really does start to address some of the accessibility and mobility needs in this corridor. We also expect that it's going to improve travel reliability and reduce congestion, and really importantly, it's going to provide new travel choices for transit users, as well as for those driving by themselves. We also anticipate, and I know this is a little counterintuitive, and I have some slides that get to this later, that it actually will improve a lot of travel on the local facilities. Again, I-66 is a lot different than other roadways, so tolling, it actually has different impacts than, say, raising the tolls on the Dulles Toll Road. One of the questions I've heard the most is really, "Well, how are you going to use the revenues?" And I think the first concern I had was, "Well, this is just another attempt of the rest of Virginia to impose some tax, toll, or fee on Northern Virginia and take it for uses in other parts of the state." We're not going to take this money and use this to build the Coalfields Expressway Phase 3 down in Bristol. That's really, really bad policy, but it also has the benefit of being illegal. So even if we wanted to do that, we cannot do that. All the toll revenues are going to stay in this region and in this corridor to help benefit the corridor and move more people through it. So this slide walks through the three kind of uses of toll revenues, and they're in priority order. So we'll use it first for the debt service, for the conversion of tolling equipment. We're then going to use it to operate, maintain, and replace the tolling equipment. After that, we expect there's going to be about $10 million a year, in today's dollars, each and every year, over the next 40 years, that would then be available for the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission to program to any of these types of projects you see listed up here. So they could use this to buy new commuter buses that might run from Loudoun County. They could use this to expand bike share to help improve last-mile access to Metro Rail stations. They could use this to help buy more railcars for the orange and silver lines to really address that crowding and get more people onto Metro Rail, again, benefiting the overall 66 corridor. But really importantly, these projects are going to be picked by this region and not by folks like me in Richmond. So I think in the past, if you, many other administrations would have taken the tackle, "We'd come talk to you about how we're going to spend this money," but it's ultimately our decision, because it's our road. This administration is taking a very different position. We believe that when it comes to these types of multimodal improvements, you all are the ones who live up here. You're the ones who ride the transit. It's your constituents who know what works and what doesn't work when it comes to this. And so we want you all, as a region, to actually pick which of these types of improvements in a given year is the best thing to advance and really improve the quality of life and accessibility in this corridor. Most folks who worked in Richmond and in transportation don't really know what Most folks who worked in Richmond and in transportation don't really know what you experience up here. We read about it in the Texas Transportation Institute report saying you lose 82 hours a year in congestion. We experience it when we drive up here to come talk to you about it, but you all live in it every day. And so we really think it's important that this region be responsible for picking those projects. The next question I hear most frequently is, "Well, how much are the tolls going to be?" This slide walks through our best estimate of what we anticipate the tolls are going to be in the future. And I think it's really important to keep in mind, for the eastbound travel in the morning and for the westbound travel in the evening, this is really tolls for people to be able to use a facility that since it opened to traffic in 1982, they have not legally been able to do so. So it is a new choice for commuters in this region. And so again, in the morning, we expect the toll is going to be about $7 to $9 for those folks, you know, coming in from the Dulles Toll Road or from the Beltway heading to places in Arlington and to DC. In the evening, we think it's going to be about $8 to $6. And then for the reverse commute, it's going to be about $1 to $2. One thing I want to say about these toll rates is, this is not the toll rate that you hear when folks talk about like the 95 express lanes. So I think I heard on the radio just last week that the average toll in the 95 express lanes is $5.80. While I've used those express lanes, I've never had the pleasure of paying just $5.80 during rush hour. Typically, it's 15 to 20 to go, you know, a certain distance on there. And really, when you hear that average toll, that's a blended toll rate of one in the morning along with the $20 to $30 toll that people pay during rush hour. What we're giving you here is our $20 to $30 rush hour toll. So when someone actually wants to get on the road at 8:00 AM and try and get to work, this is the likely toll they're going to see. If I were to give you that kind of blended toll rate, like you hear for the 495 and 95 express lanes, I could tell you that it'd be a $5 average round trip. That's kind of an, that's an accurate statement, but I think it's misleading. We really want to be clear with people, these are the toll rates you're likely to see when you actually try and use the roadway during rush hour. And again, the roadway won't be told in the non-peak periods or on weekends. Another important difference in this instance. So again, as I mentioned, the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission will have the sole right and authority to select the improvements. The Commonwealth Transportation Board is proposing to enter into a framework agreement with the commission, where as long as the commission follows these strictures up here with the projects that they pick, the Commonwealth Transportation Board will program the toll revenues to those projects. And so what we are proposing in a legally binding document is that as long as the revenues are used to benefit the toll-paying users on the facility, and let me be clear, that doesn't mean that pavement is the only way to benefit a toll-paying user. A bus on Route 50 that keeps cars off of 66 benefits that toll-paying user. A bike share expansion that allows someone to ride the bike to the Boston Metro rather than get on 66 and drive benefits the toll-paying user on 66. The projects also need to demonstrate the ability to move more people through this corridor. We need to serve the I-66 users throughout the region. And what we really mean by that is, these funds can't all be spent for the benefit of a single jurisdiction. The people who use I-66 are from throughout this region, and so the programming of these funds needs to recognize that and provide benefits to users throughout this region. And then finally, the funds would need to be spent in about a four-year period so that people who are paying these tolls and others who need to commute through this area can see the benefit of this project sooner. We don't want funds to sit around, lose purchasing power, and be banked for some type of project that may never be implemented. We need to get these funds out on the street for, you know, new buses, for other enhancements that help move more people through this corridor. So I've been asked to talk about the impacts on parallel facilities, and so I have four slides on this. I also want to note that we have, over the last three weeks, provided some very, very detailed traffic analysis to your staff as well as the staff in Arlington, Fairfax, and the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. The staffs are still going through all of this analysis, and our staff are in discussions with them as well. So this is an ongoing dialogue, but I did want to present some high-level kind of just results here to you all so you can have a sense of, at really that 10,000-foot level, what is the overall impact of this project. And so if you take a look at this map where you see blue, that means people are leaving a facility. Where you see white, that means there's no discernible change. And where you see orange, that means there's more people using a particular facility due to the changes we expect in 2017 from the implementation of this project. So eastbound in the morning, what you really see is not a lot of changes in Arlington. You see some reductions in travel in Fairfax on 123, the Dulles, is it the Dulles Connector Road there, 29? And then what you actually do is you're picking people up on 66 because you have those people who now have the ability to use that facility during the restricted period that today cannot do that. Westbound in the evening, you see kind of similar types of things. You're again picking up people on 66 out right here, kind of closer to the Beltway, and you're taking people off 7 and the Dulles Connector Road. And there's also a few less people using 66 closer in to the district. But in most of the region, you're not taking a lot of, pushing a lot of cars onto the local roads. Now again, I know that seems counterintuitive to the experience on the Dulles Toll Road and with other toll roads across the country, but in 66, particularly in this restricted direction, is different than those roads because people can't legally drive on it by themselves today. And so in a way, it's kind of the forbidden fruit of transportation up here if you're a single occupancy driver because you know it can provide a fast and reliable trip, but it's illegal for you to use it today. And so there's pent-up demand from a lot of the drivers who want to be able to use this facility. And so you actually, in that restricted direction, tend to pull people on I-66. And again, this doesn't take into account any of the transit or other multimodal improvements that would be implemented. This is purely just the impact from the changes of the tolling. We also wanted to show the impact in the reverse peak. And so this is eastbound in the PM, and what you see is there is diversion onto 123, 7 north of 66, and then mostly 50. However, we did model all of these improvements, and I believe we did some simulation analysis. And what we saw is this diversion does not have a meaningful impact on the travel speeds of these facilities, which is to say, we looked at whether or not travel speeds would go up or down, five miles per hour or more, on these facilities that had cars diverted onto them, and no facility saw its travel speeds drop by five miles per hour. So it's really kind of a negligible performance impact on these facilities that vehicles are diverted to. And if you take a look at the westbound AM commute, you kind of see the same thing. Folks diverted onto 123, the GW Parkway, and I suspect those are actually the same people. So, you know, folks coming from DC and Maryland who are trying to get to Tyson's and other area, now they're going to go up GW Parkway and down 123 to get to Tyson's. You see more people on 50. And again, we did the same kind of micro simulation analysis to look at the performance of roads like Route 50 and GW and 123 that cars were diverted onto, and there was not any meaningful impact to the travel speed because of these diversion numbers. The other thing I want to say is, this is all based on a model. So one thing your staff will probably rightly note to you is, a model is an estimate. It is an educated projection of what we believe will happen based on our experiences in other parts of the country and our analysis of this region, you know, over a period of time. So we believe this is likely the outcome. However, if there's something that happens or more localized impact that takes place because of this, the revenues that will be available on an annual basis to the NVTC, that $10 million, will be able to be programmed for roadway improvements that help address these negative impacts on these local facilities. So if for some reason our micro simulation was wrong, or the model analysis turned out to be inaccurate, there will be additional revenues that will be provided to this region over the next 40 years that will be available to address those impacts. The widening of I-66, so I talked about this a bit earlier, and this is really a contingent concept. So the way we've approached this project is we are going to implement the quick and cheaper solutions first, namely the tolling and the multimodal improvements, and then we're going to see how that works. And if that works, we don't believe that we should spend $100 million on a roadway where there no longer is congestion. However, if we implement those and there's still congestion between the Dulles Toll Connector Road and the Boston area, then we are going to take, again, a portion of these toll revenues and use that to widen the facility, to provide a third through lane between that merge area and the Boston exit. A lot of folks have said, "Well, why wouldn't you just go ahead and widen, you know, to the Potomac River?" I already showed you the stoplight at Constitution Avenue. So again, you can only funnel but so many cars into the District of Columbia. I don't believe, you know, on Constitution Avenue, it's, you know, Kennedy Center on one side and the Natural Mall on the other. So I don't think we're going to be widening Constitution Avenue despite whether or not we wanted to do that. Even if we were able to address the traffic light at Constitution, you then run into the bridge that DC owns that's seven lanes wide, and they have no desire nor financial capacity to replace and widen that bridge. And then you run into the deck in Roslyn that I talked about as well, that would make widening really past Boston very, very expensive. And again, because of the limited capacity on that bridge and the street network in DC, which is already pretty saturated, there's basically limited benefits to widening past Boston. And just as importantly, what we've actually found is a lot of the people traveling on 66, say eastbound, we found about 44% of them get off in Boston. So a lot of people using this corridor aren't actually going to DC. In fact, the plurality of them are going to Arlington, into that Roslyn-Boston corridor or down to Crystal City for jobs or other recreation activities or to visit friends. And so that's why really we think widening, if we're going to do it, should be a more limited and measured widening, you know, reflecting the context of this area from the Connector Road to Boston. Again, here's just some of the origins of users who use I-66 eastbound, and this is looking right at 66 where the Connector Road and the 66 merged together heading east. If you see this, two-thirds of all users of 66 are coming from Fairfax. Loudoun is the next biggest place with about 22% of users. And then after that, you can see it's really dispersed and spread out. This slide shows you where those folks are going. And so as I mentioned to you, the bulk of these folks, or the plurality, excuse me, are going into some place in Arlington. So 47% finished their trip in Arlington. The next, you know, most popular destination is the District with about 27%. And some of those folks go across the Roosevelt Bridge, but some of them also go down 110 and go across the 14th Street Bridge to get to Capitol Hill. And then after that, you have some really dispersed destinations. But again, this really shows you how this corridor is being used, and it's a lot of people from Virginia going to somewhere in Virginia. It's not the same kind of travel pattern I think a lot of people have assumed where it's, you know, people from Virginia driving to the District or carpooling to the District. A lot of these folks are actually going somewhere in Virginia for work or for other purposes. This slide here just provides you a table of what we expect the impact of this project to be with regards to moving more people through this corridor. And so you'll see that kind of CLRP plus. That's everything the region has planned in the long-range plan, plus the implementation of eight car trains. And then the refined package is this tolling, bus service, and potential widening that's been analyzed. And if you take a look at this, you can see that at the Beltway, you can move 35,000 more people through this corridor with a project like this. Just before Boston, you can move almost 70,000 more people through this corridor with a project like this. And everywhere you look, you'll see more people will be able to move through this corridor. And that's more people carpooling, that is more people driving by themselves, that is more people on buses, and that is more people on metro rail. So really, all modes of transportation see benefits and improvements from this project. Then my last slide, Mr. Mayor, just again goes through the project implementation. The Commonwealth is proposing that this project be implemented through a 40-year agreement that would be executed between the Commonwealth Transportation Board and the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission. It would be a legally binding agreement. The Commonwealth would be responsible for the operations and maintenance of I-66, the collection of tolling revenues, and any potential roadway improvements, i.e. the widening of 66 if that trigger is met. And then the commission would have the responsibility to select the multimodal improvements at the board within program, ensuring compliance with the law and the agreement, and really reporting on the use of funds and the benefits we've seen through the increased transit service and other multimodal improvements. So with that, Mayor Tarter, that concludes my remarks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions members of the council might have.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the very thorough report. We greatly appreciate your time. I imagine there are some questions or some comments? If so, I will open it up.
May I go first?
Sure. Mr. Baruch?
So, Mr. Tarni, thank you for being with us this evening. I really appreciate your thorough presentation. You certainly, from the extent of your presentation, anticipated some of the questions that I have. And I know that you weren't here at our work session. I had raised some significant concerns with the project, so, you know, I'll start off by saying, there's various aspects to this project that I continue to have concerns about and some questions. So, you know, and I'm looking at it from an elected official from Falls Church's viewpoint because that's who I was elected by. So when I look at this project, what I see sort of from the, you know, 50,000-foot level is a project where most of the users and most of the benefits are going to come from outside the Beltway. And people have made decisions to live out that way and very limited benefit directly to Falls Church. So that's one point I'd like to make, just starting off, that's sort of, when I look at it, that's what I'm seeing. And then layered on top of that, one of the fundamental concerns that I raise is this ultimately, given the dynamic tolling on a roadway that's already been built, raises significant equity and equality issues because I view that our taxpayers, through a variety of means, have already paid for the roads. And it's not a situation such as the hot lanes where there's new lanes being built. It's different. It's, you know, still two lanes for the most part within the Beltway minus the spot improvements which aren't necessarily going to be paid for this. So I have some concerns just with that notion that we're expecting sort of people potentially of lower income who can't afford the dynamic tolling and to be making various difficult choices for something that they've already paid for. And I just think as a moral issue, I've got significant concerns about that. And again, that's a little different than some of the other projects where you're actually getting a new lane. It's something different. This is something that I view citizens have already paid for. Two, the environmental issues, I hope that that, because I understand a lot of these are, you know, this is not necessarily for public comment, some of these decisions have been made. But on the environmental issues, specifically dealing with hybrids, electric cars, hopefully there'll be some additional capacity with the dynamic tolling, so there may be ways of looking at that issue again. I think, you know, one thing in our jurisdiction that we continue to press for is things like electric charging stations, environmental issues, and I don't, with removing some of those options, I think we're taking things off the table and making it more difficult to do more clean, environmentally friendly pursuits. And that also goes with the moving to HOV 3 for free. Just talking to our citizens and even people outside the jurisdiction, I think you're going to lose a lot of people who are either going to cut through 50 or go single and pay the, you know, luxury toll, if you will. So you're going to lose some of the environmental benefits because you're going to push people into single occupancy permits and just say, you know, "Forget it. I'm not going to do, I can only do two people in my carpool for whatever reason." And these are real examples that I'm hearing because, you know, right now it's working perfectly because we have two, we can do the carpool and ride 66. If that were to happen, it's already difficult to coordinate schedules. We're not going to do it. We're each individually going to drive and just pay the toll and, you know, suck it up, or we're just going to cut through 50, which has impacts on the city of Falls Church and other local jurisdictions as well. So I hope you're feeding that into the analysis, but there are environmental impacts that I don't think are being fully thought through. Two, on the traffic in our local streets, I think, as you mentioned, the models have their limitations. I'm not convinced by the models based on what I'm hearing, just anecdotally from our citizens and also neighboring jurisdictions and people that I meet and I know live and use 66 and how they use it and how they would plan on using it with the rollout of these And I'd like staff to learn a little bit more, and I don't want to do that tonight, how we're getting 10 million and exactly what that would mean for Falls Church, even if those estimates for the excess revenue are accurate. Because I, to my knowledge, all these tolling, and I understand that this is going to be public versus some of the private partnerships that other jurisdictions have done, but I don't think any of them that I know of have ever really gone red, or I'm sorry, into the black to the level that was ever anticipated. So, you know, and if they have, somebody can educate me saying that those models in other jurisdictions actually got it right. But from what I understand, nobody's hit the targets that early on, and it's taken longer to even hit the targets. So... So I'd like to learn more about what the ten million dollars is and how accurate that is and what's going into that. And then two, what that actually means for Falls Church, assuming we hit the ten million. What types of projects, what type of relief would be getting? Because I think we are going to have definite impacts on our local streets. And I talked already about the losing of HOV and hybrids and my concerns there. And then, Mr. Donahue, you mentioned that they're, assuming that the models are wrong, there's, is additional dollars are going to be made available? Or is that the ten million?
Ten million can be programmed for that if that's what the region determines it would like to do with those funds.
So that's not an additional ten million? That's sort of like a penalty, hey, we got it wrong, sorry?
I don't know if I would paraphrase it that way, but again, we all talk about things differently. What I would say is there's ten million dollars a year in today's dollars, each and every year over the forty years of this term, that can be available to this region to program that the state is in effect saying, members of this region, you live here, we believe you probably know what are best with regards to the use of these revenues, and we're providing that to the region.
But that ten million is based on the tolling revenue?
That is correct. And there are some facilities, even those in these regions, that are meeting their toll projections. There's really kind of two, there was an inflection point, if you will, in traffic and revenue estimation.
But that's two points. So, just so I understand this point. So if the modeling is completely wrong, and there is greater impact to local surface streets, et cetera, in local jurisdictions, and we don't hit the excess revenue, there's no additional dollars that come in?
So, Councilmember Bruck, this project is different than other projects, so the capital cost upfront of this project is approximately forty-five million dollars. The capital cost of the 495 express lanes, to put it in context, was about 1.4 billion dollars with about another 400 million dollars in financing costs. And the capital cost of the 95 express lanes was just south of 900 million dollars with another few hundred million dollars in financing costs. So one of the reasons those other projects don't go into the black, as you've said, is because they have debt service payments that are in the tens of millions of dollars a year. This project will have debt service payments that are in the ones of millions of dollars a year. I think it's actually going to be about 1.25 million dollars on an annual basis. And so even if the traffic and revenue is off, which I don't believe it will be, again, because there's been an inflection point, and the 95 project is meeting its traffic projections, there is going to be excess revenues in this corridor.
Okay. But again, that's based on estimates. So there's nothing in the agreements that says ten million is sort of the guaranteed amount. And there's nothing that says that if we got the modeling on the transportation issues of how it's affecting jurisdictions within the Beltway of this is how much is going to be kicked in to alleviate some of those local transportation issues?
Councilmember Bruck, what the agreement says is that the toll revenues will be first, used first for the debt service? The implementation of the toll infrastructure, which is basically toll gantries and variable message signs, as well as some technological improvements throughout the corridor, then to do the operations and maintenance of that equipment? And then everything else after that is available for the commission to program?
Okay. I think I've got my answer. So I think the way I'm understanding it, again, is, you know, it's not a guaranteed ten million, it depends on what's available after everything else is sort of paid for and paid out.
Those two things, yes.
After those two things. And then two, there's not a separate pool of money outside of that, should the transportation modeling be incorrect?
That is correct. So there's just the ten million dollars. And again, the model that we use is the regional travel demand model, which is what is used for every other transportation improvement that's programmed in this region. So it does have its limitations, but it is, for better or worse, the best tool that we have.
So, a couple of questions for staff, and we can do that later, just so we get a clear indication to our citizens of what this means, assuming we hit, and it's, again, it's a huge assumption of what, you know, that we'll hit the ten million a year, what that necessarily would mean for Falls Church, if we can get responses back to that. I don't know if we've already done that, or we'll do it in the future. And then two, sort of what are the, I know that obviously we're involved in the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, sort of what are the next steps as far as this project goes and where are we headed? And I know that there's still public meetings going on or upcoming, if I'm not mistaken. So if we can get that out to our citizens, because I think that this is going to be a huge issue for our citizens as we move forward and our regional partners as well. So thank you. I may have other questions, but I'll turn it over to others at this point.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Oliver?
So, you've said about forty thousand more people will move through the corridor, which according to the other numbers you put up is about ten percent addition to ballpark. And I'm just wondering what the regional growth is right now?
Councilmember Oliver, I don't have that figure, but I think what you're driving at is, is regional growth higher than ten percent? And I suspect it probably is in certain areas, and the job growth certainly is in this corridor.
Okay. So I guess I'm interested from staff or whatever, that we can compare the regional growth to the throughput and see whether we actually have a net gain in terms of, you know, the ability to move people through.
Councilmember Oliver, that is a net gain, because that other set of numbers has all the growth assumptions in it as well. And what it shows is that the roadway and the transit just can't move more people. It becomes too congested on the buses, too congested on the roadways, because people don't move. The same growth assumptions are in both those sets of numbers, and so as you said, there's about a ten percent increase in the ability to move more people through this corridor.
Right. I guess whether we actually will see a benefit, because if the growth, depending upon the growth, if the growth is close to the ability to move people through, we're not going to necessarily see a change in performance. I'm just curious about the relative. The second thing I wanted to ask about is, you're using as your performance measure travel speed. And I'm wondering whether the modeling is taken into consideration pedestrian safety at all? And the potential impact to jurisdictions of having a higher volume of traffic, particularly if they're still moving at high speeds?
So Councilmember Oliver, the overall performance measure for the project is person throughput. And so that's recognizing this is a more densely built area where things like me, soft-squishy things like myself, walk around, and we don't want them to get hit by two-ton metal boxes, which often can be at odds with some things the DOT has done. And so the overall performance measure for this project is moving more people. With regards to the widening of I-66, which again is an interstate facility where bicycles and pedestrians are prohibited, that is where we're going to analyze the performance of that roadway using speed. So travel speed is only going to be used to analyze whether or not the widening of 66 between the Connector Road and Boston needs to take place. We are not going to be trying to have people drive 55 miles per hour down Seventh Street, or Seventh, Route Seven, excuse me.
I understand that, but when you were showing the effects on the feeder roads, you were talking about the higher or lower volume and whether they were maintaining the speeds. And I'm just concerned about the impact on pedestrian safety in those locations. And I guess the last major point I have is that you've said, and all along, everyone has said, that we are going to serve users throughout the region and that we are going to ensure that we're maximizing throughput. But we know that the restrictions that you're putting on the NVTC do not, you're not putting any restrictions on how the NVTC allocates those funds. And the NVTC currently has a model that is a disadvantage for a small jurisdiction like Falls Church. And I know that both people in Loudoun County and people in the inner suburbs are all interested in how much of the pie is mine, and you all aren't saying. But we're not, you're not even doing anything that says a certain, a minimum percentage has to go to each jurisdiction. There's no minimum. So you could do this project and ten million dollars, and not a penny would go to doing anything in Falls Church, correct?
Councilmember Oliver, we are not setting minimum percentages for the distribution of that ten million dollars. We believe this corridor is going to change and evolve over time, and we don't want to predetermine what might be the best solutions to help move more people through this area and, you know, deal with issues like quality of life and accessibility. So no, we are not saying that the pie gets cut exactly this way. That is going to have to be a regional discussion.
Okay. But there's also just no general minimum. Every region should see at least one project, or every region should see at least...
So there are provisions that say that the toll revenues need to be used to benefit 66 users throughout the region, and there are users of 66 from Falls Church. And so I would argue that if the commission did not program any revenues in Falls Church over a period of time, they would be in violation of the agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Just speaking from the perspective of someone who moved here from the auto-dependent South in 1980 and was drawn to the transit environment, bus, rail, and the changes that I've seen in the area since I've been here, I mean, it is a true fact that 66, when it was built, I think, did have a positive impact on traffic congestion in the city of Falls Church. People have been here longer than I have, you know, recall momentous traffic jams in the 50s and 60s, early 60s. So, you know, wisely managed I-66, I think, can actually help our traffic situation here. I mean, to some degree, that's going on now. I think that our data show that on Broad and Washington Street, the total traffic volume over the last ten or eleven years has actually decreased slightly. And that tells you that, you know, something that we're doing is achieving that outcome. So I guess I want to, I want to be supportive of something being done with 66 that keeps moving us in that direction. You know, if people want to live all the way out in Loudoun County and pay fifteen bucks to drive their Lexus into the district, I guess I could tolerate that. I have some of the same equity concerns that Councilmember Bruck has. But I can only tolerate it really, I think, if, to follow along what Councilmember Oliver said, if, you know, the people who are choosing to live in a location such as Falls Church for environmental reasons, for, you know, nature of commute reasons, they'd rather ride a train than drive a car, I would like to see that that choice is also rewarded and incentivized. Because, I mean, I see our job, the little city of Falls Church's job in the region as, you know, attracting a certain amount of density around transit and keeping people out of their single occupancy vehicles. I mean, that's the economy that I hope we will continue on a track to develop here. And so, I know you have to be concerned about the whole Commonwealth, and we only have to be concerned about 13,300 people, but I would appeal for some consideration of, you know, different choices about where you live and how you commute. And that leads me to the final point, which is, something has to be done about the metro, the subway. I mean, it is, everybody knows it's degraded in quality, the service, reliability, you know, the comfort and ease of use. It's just not acceptable the way it is now. Anyone who commutes into town every day, I used to for many years, my wife still does, knows that it's almost to the point now where if you have to have something to do at, you know, nine o'clock, you just cannot rely on the metro to get you there at nine o'clock. And that's not acceptable. We can't have a society where that's the case. So I guess what I'm asking is for the Commonwealth to, you know, put its shoulder to the wheel in every way possible to underscore that, you know, when something melts down somewhere on the system and they tell us that it's going to be six months of reduced service, we just can't have that. I mean, we have to find a way to address these problems more quickly. And, you know, maybe it's resources, maybe it's reallocation of current resources, but I am somewhat concerned that you rightfully point out, you know, that the thing dumps on to Constitution Avenue and E Street, and, you know, that used to be the way that I went into town when I drove. And what do we do about that? Well, I don't think the district is doing anything about it or plans to do anything about it. So no matter what we do with 66, we are, we're doing more of that. And I would like to see a plan overall that places more emphasis on improving rail service, increasing, I mean, to start with, eight-pass, eight-car trains that reliably operate the way they used to, you know, in the old days. And that's sort of where I would like to see the Commonwealth rhetorically and financially and creatively put its efforts. I am a little concerned, finally, I'm sorry, one other point, that we are doing things today that twenty or even maybe fifteen years from now are going to look not as visionary as we might wish, you know? If we're going to have autonomous vehicles or, you know, some means of conveyance that is not what we generally all use today, I'm not sure that this plan is taking us in that direction or anticipating that. And so as you make your plans, you know, let's try to provide some flexibility if a switch is flipped and, pretty quickly, the way that we get into the vehicles and travel in them has changed. So when you make changes to I-66, you know, taking that into account and having lanes or vehicle pathways that might evolve rather quickly from traditional automobiles to whatever comes next, I think is something that we ought to think about.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot. Thanks to my colleagues for their comments. In terms of the status of things, NVTC on Thursday will begin its work through a working group in whichever jurisdiction is represented, including Falls Church, on the framework agreement as to how to plan for and then expend whatever money is available from toll revenue that exceeds the cost of operation. So that's ongoing. Secondly, I wanted to get at this ten million dollars. It's good to have ten million dollars, but ten million dollars doesn't buy a lot of transit or anything else. So we need to keep in mind that maximum use of that is not going to produce the kind of mode share change that we really need to have in this corridor. And it goes back to something Phil mentioned, and I'll get back to that in a minute. So even this ten million dollars might conceivably be less if certain triggers are met and the decision is made to widen 66. Is that right? So the ten million conceivably could go down to five million or even zero?
Councilman Snyder, the way we would structure the agreement, it would never go down to zero. It would be a drawdown of a percentage of the funds, and it's our sincere goal to have that percentage be somewhere significantly south of 50%. So say we're off on our toll estimates and it's five million overall, not 10 million, and it's your illustrative figures.
Right.
Say the drawdown is 40%. The state would keep two and you would get three. It would never be zero unless we are so off that the tolls don't bring in 1.25 million dollars.
And one of the legal, as we've been told, one of the legal requirements for the expenditure of the money is that it benefits toll users. So the money could be spent in Falls Church, could be spent in Arlington, it could be spent in Prince William County, it could be spent in Loudoun, pretty much to benefit the toll users. That's one of the requirements. Is that right?
Councilmember Snyder, there is a requirement both in federal laws and state court precedent that the use of toll revenues be to the benefit of the toll-paying users in that corridor and facility.
Okay.
Which could be, you know, a bus that starts in Loudoun, it could be bike share in Falls Church, it could be a bus from Prince William, it could be more, you know, horns lined much railcars. That's a regional decision as this administration is proposing it. We're not trying to dictate the outcomes to the region.
Okay. So the next point is that this is tolling both ways during the peak hours, right? Can you go back to like slide 18 or 19? Because I hadn't really seen this one slide before. I think that's the one. Westbound, do westbound AM?
This is the westbound AM here.
Okay. So what you see is people are getting onto 66 now without tolls. They'll now be paying tolls. And so I think the sense is you're going to have people leaving 66 onto the arterials when they're going opposite the rush hour. Am I reading that chart right?
That is correct.
Okay.
What you see is there is diversion onto Route 50.
Yeah.
Route Seven north of 66 and Route 123. Again, as we talked about earlier, and Councilmember Oliver noted, what we analyzed just to see what those impacts would be, and no roadway operates five miles an hour slower
Right.
than it otherwise would operate without this project.
Okay. Thanks. So in conclusion, you rightly defined I-66 and its uniqueness, because you pretty much run into the District of Columbia, and that's all the capacity you're going to have. And in fact, the DC is actively reducing car lanes by converting them to bike lanes, which is an independent jurisdiction that has the right to do. bike lanes, which is an independent jurisdiction that has the right to do. They've also talked about a congestion cost that is obviously a very highly controversial issue. So, the movement in the District of Columbia is to reduce roadway capacity. So, in one sense, you have an interstate, and you made this point, that you kind of run into a wall, in essence, or you certainly run into a funnel that narrows down dramatically. And so, to pour more single occupancy vehicles into that situation is to spend a lot of money and not produce anything but, but, but exactly the opposite of what you want to do. The second thing is that there's sort of a wall, as you can imagine, even in Virginia, because if you picture getting off the Sycamore Street exit in either way from 66 within a block, you have a red light, and you have highly crowded arterial highways already. So, to me, the ultimate objective is a dramatic change in mode share. And if this doesn't do it, it's spending a lot of money to send single occupancy vehicles right into stoplights or in the District of Columbia, right into, I don't even know what, just absolute gridlock. So, to me, the ultimate objective is a dramatic change in mode share. And if we don't get it through this or whatever, the notion of widening 66 is absolutely a waste of money because you're going to produce nothing but a more rapid way by which you can end up absolutely stuck in gridlock, either in the district or in the inner jurisdictions in Virginia. So, those were just the comments I wanted to make. This is the hardest working group of people that I've ever worked with in VDOT, and so, thank you very much for the hard work that you've put in.
And Councilmember, can I just, to your last point, just respond a little bit generally? So, I think if you take a look at the way this project is proposed, I think in the past, if you looked, there was the major investment study of 66 in the mid 90s that wrapped up in 1999. There was idea 66 from 2002 to 2006. The outcome of every single one of those was widen 66 now, add new pavement, let people just drive more. If you take a look at what this proposal is, I think it's the first time there's been a proposal that recognizes a unique context of 66 inside the beltway, and we're saying, manage the road better first. Create incentives for carpooling. I want to be honest to some of the points you made. We don't have a carpooling culture yet on I-66. The state, working with the region, we need to do a lot of work over the next few years to really build that carpooling culture to make this work. Again, with or without this project, HOV 3 is coming. What this project can do, though, is provide us with money to create carpool incentives, to form new van pools, and to build park and ride lots, to put in place that carpooling infrastructure that the 95 corridor has today, but this corridor doesn't. Without this project, that money's going to be a lot harder to come by. And then, the other thing this project is really doing is putting that money back into additional buses and other multimodal improvements in this corridor to try and move more people, you know, through here in, in modes beyond just single occupancy vehicles. However, I don't want to sit here and, you know, spin a false tale. This is not the silver bullet to this corridor. A lot of work is going to need to be done both by the state and by this region and its local jurisdictions to make sure that people can continue to be able to reach destinations and have a high quality of life in this area. The growth, and particularly the pace of growth, makes that very, very difficult. But it's going to require multiple modes of transportation, it's going to require looking at creative and unique solutions, but just as importantly, it's going to require coming up with solutions that can be implemented regionally and, you know, are something that is achievable. I think for too long on 66, we've talked about someone's idea of perfect. The problem with one person's idea of perfect is it's someone else's idea of the worst idea out there, and we just never can implement it. So, you've had people for years saying widen 66, add a general purpose lane to the bridge. I think that's a silly idea, but that is someone's idea of perfect. You have other people say everyone should just get on a bus who lives outside the beltway. I think we probably do need more bus service outside the beltway, but I think it's unrealistic to ask everyone who lives outside the beltway needs to travel inside the beltway to get on a bus. What this project tries to do, and I'm not saying it does do it, but I, I personally think it does, is to find a way balancing the diverse feelings and needs throughout this region to move more people and hopefully improve the conditions, both quality of life and travel, in this area. I think ultimately, you know, a lot of that's going to depend on how the commission chooses to suspend these funds. But I think what that study that was done by the McDonnell administration in coordination with your local jurisdictions saw is if they're programmed a certain way, we can get real benefits. So, that study, one of the things it looked at was running buses, and it looked at a ton of them, and their ultimate kind of cutoff was, we're not going to pay for a new bus unless it carries 35 person, people an hour on those trips. That's a pretty darn full bus. That's a really effective, you know, transit service, in my opinion, having 35 people on a bus as it's moving around. I mean, a lot of these buses only carry, you know, 40 to 50 people, and that's what you're standing. And a lot of people don't want to stand when they're coming all the way from Ashburn. That's pretty far. And so, I think this project, again, has the ability to do a lot of good, but there's still a lot of work that remains. And that's really a lot of the projects that, as this area continues to densify and grow, we're going to have to look more at management, operations, and ongoing kind of review of the system and tweaking of it to be able to make it work. It can't just be about pavement in the future. Thank you.
Great. We've got just a couple more questions. If you could indulge us for a few more minutes, Ms. Connolly?
Thanks, Mr. Donahue. My question is more, and I'm glad this slide is up, because it's about the traffic on the other arterials. Every traffic study we have done in the city of Falls Church says most of the traffic that is clogging our streets is pass-through traffic. So, my concern is that this is going to, even though the arrows are white or blue mostly, it, the traffic on Route 7 during evening rush hour is rough, and eve, this isn't going to make it any better, I guess. So, that's one of my concerns, even though you have a white line there.
So, let's go to the, so in the evening peak, what this project does do is it pulls people onto 66. When you're in that restricted direction, it's only in the reverse peak where you see generally diversion off roads. So, heading west in the evening,
Right.
traffic conditions should either stay the same or get better, and at the very worst, you'll have more travel options by the provision of new bus service and other multimodal improvements that would take place.
Right. But some of those travel options, well, will be driving on Route 7, or driving on 29, or driving on 50, that will take you in a different route. So, one of my questions is, and I'm not quite sure of the status now, but that Route 50 is restricted for truck traffic in some areas around Falls Church? Is that so? Mike Collins is nodding his head.
I agree. A and Amanda, I do not know the answer.
Is it ins, just inside the beltway? So, it's restricted to truck traffic inside the beltway, which means that truck traffic goes on Route 29 inside the beltway, which comes right through the city of Falls Church. Has there been any consideration of opening up 50 to truck traffic so that that would relieve some of the pressure that comes through our little city that has narrow areas of 29 and 7?
Councilmember Connolly, I can certainly raise that issue with the secretary and the commissioner. I think if, if we did new floors, something like that, it would be independent of this project, but I can definitely raise that issue with them. At this point, I don't believe it's something that we have looked at on the last two years, but again, I will raise that issue.
I just, I think that is something that may relieve some of that pressure. I live right off of 29, and there's just a lot of trucks that come through there that if they were on 50, which is a wider road, it may relieve some of that pressure through smaller communities.
And I, I would just point out, this is an important issue that we have raised repeatedly through the years, and it, policy decisions were made on 66 and on Route 50 to not allow truck traffic to address other jurisdictions' concerns. And as a consequence, Route 7 has a concentration of truck traffic, which is really inappropriate for the design of the street. And it's, it's something that we would like to keep on VDOT's radar screen and continue to work on.
I will raise that with folks back in Richmond.
Thank you.
Mr. Bruck?
So, one point that Councilmember Oliver, I believe, raised was sort of, are there minimums to how much, or how many projects or how many dollars would go to Falls Church? And again, you know, certainly myself and, and others sitting here are looking at it through a Falls Church lens. And this, this isn't really a, a point for necessarily to the VDOT representatives, but, but it has more to do with how the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission is set up. And from what I understand from Vice Mayor Snyder, who very ably represents us, is that we have one vote. Other jurisdictions, and I believe it's population-based, and Vice, the Vice American, correct me, may have more than one vote. For, I believe Fairfax may, may have three or four, or other jurisdictions that grow could have additional votes. But Falls Church, right now, given our size, is likely to have one vote. So, that gets back to, you know, what does this all mean for Falls Church if we have significant impacts as a result of this project? So, you know, you do the math, figure out where the votes are, and Falls Church is likely not to necessarily vie very well. So, I, I just think that we need to be open to the, you know, there's another quote-unquote political dynamic in how the votes in the regional body operate and where that puts Falls Church, given our voting representation on that body. And, you know, my view is that despite all the efforts that, that we may have and, and our influence on, on that body is, is going to be limited just by sheer number of votes. So, to the point that you were raising, Councilmember Oliver, I, I think that if we are impacted, more so for whatever reason, because we could get squeezed, because we're sort of in the middle of the corridor in some ways, between Arlington, which we know is going to have growth and growth happening along with what's happening in Tysons, we could be really at a, at a pressure point in addition to this project. But our voting abilities, given that we've got one vote and other jurisdictions that surround us have multiple votes, it's just going to be very hard when we're squeezed for a very limited number of dollars. And that's just going to be reality. So, you know, I hear everything that's being said this evening, and, and I know that the state's doing everything it can, but we've got our own separate problems with how the region's organized around this issue. And that's not to say that having the commission take this on is probably the best solution. So, this is not directed at the state, but, but it's one that we're going to have to sort out as a region. But I, I think the point needs to be made. It's not every jurisdiction gets one vote, so it's, there's going to be equity. In fact, there is no equity in that right now. So, and there, there's going to be a lot of movement for, for a limited number of funds, assuming even the modeling is right. So, and, and I don't mean to be negative about that, because I think as a region, we generally come together on transportation issues. But, but I think it's important for our citizens to understand how, how the voting and how that process works in the regional context. Thank you.
Okay. I've just got a few comments, and I've shared many of these, I think privately with you at some of our earlier meetings. But I share the concerns of my colleagues about diversion of traffic from I-66 on the city roads. You know, the city parallels Route 66 in many ways, and so I think we're a natural place for people who don't want to pay tolls. There'll be people who behave irrationally, who don't follow your model, and will come on our roads, and they're already clogged with pass-through traffic. It's really not of our own making, but we suffer the consequences already. And that impedes our own ability to develop our own city. For example, that's regularly mentioned by people when a new project comes along, is the traffic issues, when in fact, a lot of the traffic issues relate to other generated traffic elsewhere. And this is, I think, going to exasperate, exasperate it. I share also the concerns about how do we ensure funding to mitigate these traffic impacts? How will that make its way to Falls Church? And given the fact we have very limited voting rights in NVTC, I'm concerned that we won't necessarily get our, quote, "fair share" of mitigation dollars, and that they may go to elsewhere on big-ticket projects. $10 million isn't a lot anyway, and if you want to redo an interchange or something like that, it can be sucked up pretty quick. So, for us, the small things that we might want to do, maybe it's bike share or trying to get better access to metro can really make a big impact on our citizens, and I think help move a lot of traffic. But we may get lost in the shuffle, and so, I remain concerned that we don't have a mechanism to ensure that we'll get dollars from this project. So, I think you're probably hearing sort of similar concerns from all of us. But we appreciate you coming up here. Unless there's any other pressing comments, I would just say again that we appreciate you coming up here and listening to what we have to say and to continuing the dialogue. I know there's much more to be done before this gets to fruition, but we'll be speaking with you, I'm sure, more coming up here. But thanks again for you and your team for speaking with us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, if we can just, just sort of public hazard of where the potential inputs are, of where, you know, the next set of hearings are.
Sure.
I know that there's some coming. And also, if we can get a readout from staff, sort of what the process is moving forward, and are there additional inputs that the city council can have in this process? And kind of if, if you can kind of lay that out a little bit of what are the next steps in public hearing and kind of, you know, when does the agreement get signed, kind of all those things?
Yes. So, there are public hearings next week. There's one on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. I believe Monday is at the VDOT district office, and I, Tuesday is
Mary Ellen.
Washington Leap. So, there's three public hearings next week, and then there's discussions at the, I believe, pre-commissioned meetings as well as the next.
So, as appropriate, Mr. Shields, can we just make sure that this is front and center, somewhere on the city's website, and we get it out? You know, and, and dare I say, you know, you know, maybe it's, it's worth, Mr. Shields, that you talked to Dr. Jones about, maybe they want to get this to the school list. Again, it's their choice, but I, I think the more, the more ways we can make sure our citizens are aware of what's going on, the more helpful it would be, at least giving them the opportunity to know when these meetings are happening. And if the schools can assist with that through, through their forum, if they choose to. And again, it's their choice of whether they want to push this information out. I think it would be helpful. It's just going to be one of those things that I worry about, that, you know, all of a sudden, citizens wake up and they're like, what happened with all these changes? And yet, we've talked about it for, you know, a number of years.
So, the, if I could just reinforce, since we're on TV, and it'll be replayed October 6th, Tuesday, at 7:30, will be Mary Ellen Henderson, which is the closest regional VDOT meeting on this subject. That'll go into more depth with this, this evening. Mr. Donahue met Nick Benton of News Press, and he has the, I've emailed him the meeting announcements, and Susan Cora have that as well. So, we certainly can do more of a push on that meeting. The timeline and sort of the internal process, staff are just starting the review of the framework agreement with NVTC. As Mr. Donahue indicated, Mike Collins and Paul Stotter have been working on the transportation analysis with our VDOT partners, and we're also been briefed on the revenue piece. The general timeline is to bring back to council action to approve and support the framework agreement or not in October, so that the NVTC on the current schedule, as I understand it, could take action on approving that in November. And then, the whole project revenue framework agreement, everything could be on the CTV agenda in December. The goal being, by the end of this calendar year, this project is wrapped up to proceed towards implementation. That will mean quite a heavy staff review in October, with right now, tentatively us bringing this to your second October meeting, fourth week of the month.
Can I just ask that, do we have any room in our calendar to bring this before it goes to the commission's next meeting where they're going to discuss this, for us to have a council meeting or a work session about it? And, and the reason why I'm asking that, I don't want to get too involved in it tonight, but the, these are issues that may go forward without us. And what I'm thinking, and I'm just sort of brainstorming a little bit, there may be ways of instilling into the agreement, sort of as a side agreement, certain equity and fair share notions outside of the vote that may be able to go into that. And, and again, I'm speaking aloud, but, but there may be creative ways outside of what the state is doing. And again, I think it's going to need a lot of legal review based on what I heard tonight, but it may be worthy of us taking it up. Because I do, as, as I mentioned, and again, I think VDOT's been doing, you know, yeoman's work. There's no easy solutions. I absolutely agree that there's a lot of ideas, and, and this is, you know, there is no perfect solution here. So, you know, please take my comments for what they're worth. And, and I'm just sharing with you my concerns. And again, I realize that there's no great answers here, and you all are doing the best you can. But I think that there may be more things that we can do regionally to address the fair share issue. So, if there's room, I would just ask that we have a council discuss So if there's room, I would just ask that we have a council discussion about that that's more of a regional discussion rather than a pure VDOT discussion.
I think there will not be council time for another in-depth discussion before NVTC meets next week. However, I think this is a good start of the conversation that certainly Mr. Snyder will have in mind when we have that discussion. Staff are starting to do work with NVTC now, both on the peace with the state and then how we would regionally work together, so I think your points are well taken. We currently have scheduled a work session, I think it's October 21st, and council action on the 28th, where we'd have a much more in-depth discussion before NVTC takes its formal vote. There'll be a lot of work over the next two weeks at the staff level so that we can do a full briefing for you all.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you, unless there's anything else, I again will thank you, and I look forward to continuing this dialogue with council and the folks in Richmond and the likes. Thanks again for coming up, and we'll be talking to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move. Excuse me? You want a break? I tell you, why don't we just take care of this last bit of business, and then we'll take a quick break. We have actually one other item that I presented with this picture, which is the Community Wildlife Habitat Certificate that was awarded about 10 days ago. I think pretty much everybody up here was at the event, which is a great event. I think we're one of 84 such wildlife habitats in the whole United States, a pretty big honor and a great, great event. So thank all of you for participating. Mr. Lamoney, I see you're leaving. You are scheduled to speak in just a moment. If you've, if you're waiting to speak, I can try to get you on it just a second, if you could. All right, so we've got, I think, one oath of office, if she's still here, is that right? One of all...
I don't think she's here.
Okay. So why don't we go ahead and pass on that? And then why don't we switch the written comments, and we'll go ahead and take the general public comments right now, so you can maybe speak and then head on out. Were you leaving, Mr. Lamoney? Were you going to leave for the evening?
No, not for the evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were taking off due to the delay in getting to public comment.
Your written comments.
That's fine. Okay, why don't we go on to the written comments, then?
Yes.
We're going to take a break right after we get through with these, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Written comments, we had four. Paul and Cindy Whackerbarth, 304 Walnut Street, wrote to ask that the Mason Row project include lead standard building, green roofs, solar panels, rain barrels, and native plant landscaping. Rohini Winters of 324 Grove Avenue wrote about her concerns with an amusement tax as it relates to Mason Row. She also asked for reduced height, massing, and density for the project. John Lamoney, 304 Great Falls Street, and Ira Kalin, 429 Park Avenue, sent a request for removal of a document entitled "Mixed Use Development: A Model That More Than Pays For Itself" from the City Document Center because they questioned the methodology used to obtain the calculations in the document. The Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation sent a memo advising that city resources at this time are not adequate to achieve the walk-friendly community designation. They suggested that resources would be better utilized to develop and secure the adoption of pedestrian-friendly design standards and pedestrian-friendly facilities manual, and implementing pedestrian projects before applying for the WFC designation.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so we have three speakers who have submitted speaker slips. Why don't we start with Mr. Lamoney? Welcome. I thought you were leaving for the evening, so I wanted to make sure you had a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Torres. John Lamoney, 304 Great Falls Street. As you have just heard, Mr. Kalin and I have submitted a letter to you respectfully requesting that you instruct the city manager to remove the document entitled "Mixed Use Development: A Model More That Pays For Itself" from the City Document Center and all other city files. I think the letter sets out clearly the reason for making this request, although it would be worth making an additional comment. It's more than just methodology, there are also some claims that are empirically false in that document that is referred to. I can elaborate on that if you wish. Only, in addition to that, I only want to make the following comments. Falls Church residents and taxpayers should be deeply concerned that an official city document draws on incomplete and methodologically flawed data to make misleading and false claims. It can only be interpreted as a propaganda piece aimed at furthering development interest in this city. I personally believe that it's shameful that some city and school officials have repeated both publicly and privately some of the misleading and false claims contained in this document. Further voicing such claims can only raise serious questions about public integrity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Englander. Thank you for waiting around. Normally, it doesn't take this long to get to public comment, but thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Jeff Englander. I live at 523 Timber Lane here in our great city. I picked up my son this evening, who is a evening rider on the Metro Rail. May I ask the state to come back into the room to hear this? I'm lucky, I knock on wood, that I have a son who's a teenager, who's highly intelligent and has common sense. I feel very lucky about that. He comes home on the Metro from school every day, and he routinely, now over the last few weeks, and school has begun, exited the train and waited to have the train clear. Apparently, Metro Rail has begun some sort of an experiment over the last few weeks to reduce the number of trains during rush hour on the Orange Line. It is beyond dangerous situation. I say this, and I implore you to please, with your colleagues in Arlington and Fairfax, please approach WMADA this week, saying that their experiment has completely failed. I'm not sure, I think some of you actually take the Metro, maybe you've seen it firsthand. If not, I welcome you to survey the riders when they get off on East or West Falls Church Station one evening this week, and just simply ask them. I think you could just see it on their face, the, it's truly a dangerous situation. My son exits the trains because they're just too packed at Roslyn, and he waits there. Tonight, he waited there over an hour to try to get a train that he could actually stand on. At the end of the day, I'm very fearful that this experiment they've done of reducing the number of cars is actually going to cause harm to people, either through increased crime, because there's far too many people who are waiting on the platforms just to enter the trains to come home, but also, more importantly, you know, if there's too many people on the platform, there could be situations where someone could get injured, and we don't want that. We need to have a safe place for our people to transport back and forth from home to work, and we need to have that now. And I ask you, please, this week, if you could contact with your counterparts in Arlington and Fairfax, the more the merrier, just feel free to just walk into WMADA and say, "Please end this experiment on the Orange and Silver Lines." I would greatly appreciate it. It's really dangerous. And also, I'm glad the people from the state are here. I see a silver lining in all this I-66. What we ought to do is post signs on 7 and 29, saying, "One way to solve this problem is to have your office relocate here." So I also ask you to please notify the EDA, that maybe they should have a new mantra, that is, "Help us relocate offices out of the Washington area and put them into Falls Church City. This way, we can help alleviate the traffic mess." I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Ira Kalin. Welcome.
I'd just like to follow up on the same issue that John Lamoney spoke to regarding the removal of this document from the document center and files. This should be decided, can be decided right here, right now. This doesn't have to go back for further study. Just make a very quick example. If we look at the increase in the number of people that will take place, we have about, at two people per apartment, we have from the six projects included 1,400 new residents. If we take Harris Teeter and Rushmore, Harris Teeter and the Reserve, we have another 1,000 inhabitants. And if you took in account the George Mason, the Mason Row, excuse me, if you wanted to, you'd have another 600. That's 3,000 more people in the city, and our model does not incorporate capital costs. All these people are going to be using our services, sewage, parks, roads, everything, and there's no cost associated with 3,000 new people. This model and this document has to be removed, because it is entirely misleading as to what the impact is. It doesn't take into account any of the long-term capital costs. The benefits have to be recalculated and redesigned. The existing model was done when we had excess capacity. Maybe it worked at that point, but we have no excess capacity, and everybody that comes that's additional, it puts stress on a system that's already maxed out. And that's why that document has to come out. Now, it is totally incorrect, and I would like to see the city council address that today, not take it back for further review and analysis. Very straightforward. Just take it out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to the citizen comments, but I'm mindful of the fact that we were asked for a break. So do you want to do the break, or do you want to do the response?
Let's bank through the comments. Let's just keep this meeting going.
Okay, first, Jeff Englander's comments. At the last NVTC meeting, one of the legislative members suggested perhaps it was now time for a control board for Metro, in essence, to start new. And my initial reaction was, well, I'm not sure I want Congress to be running Metro, but then I thought more and more about it, and it's an issue I plan to bring up at the NVTC meeting on Thursday. Have we gotten to a point where the entire structure is incapable of functioning? And the kind of things that Jeff talked about, I experience on a daily basis. The service is getting dramatically worse over the past two months than I ever recall it to be, with the exception of one other particular time. So something has got to change and change in a very significant way. So I'm very sensitive to what Jeff said. I experience it, I think others in the city of Falls Church do. We're paying to support Metro. The Metro Board, quite understandably, has taken a hands-off view on the part of others. They have the fiduciary obligation to manage the system, and they're paid practically nothing for it, and it's like another full-time job. But I'm wondering whether we just have gotten to a point where we just need an entirely new approach. And that will be both governance, but it will also mean additional funding. So in any event, that's an initial reaction to Jeff's comments, and I thank him for bringing it up. And it supports a notion that I think I'm getting from others. Secondly, with regard to the work on the data regarding the development projects, I think some fundamentally good questions have been raised. Where did the document from the city come from? And I would like an answer to that. And then, secondly, I do have a concern that it's not adequately fully measuring the capacity, both school and city issues. And that's a matter of technical work and determining whether, in fact, the existing model does it adequately or not. Is it really measuring the cost of the additional seats at Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason High School that we've been told that the school needs? Some of it's a result of single-family houses, that's true. Some of it's a result of development projects that we've permitted in other, in areas where they would not otherwise have been permitted. So I do think it's a matter of understanding, where did the document come from? And number two, does the document fully reflect all costs as well as benefits? And I think those are reasonable questions. I don't arrive at a conclusion necessarily that it's an inappropriate document, or that the model is not gathering all the information it should, but I think some reasonable questions have been asked by our citizens, and I think we should respond accordingly. Those are my two comments.
Mr. Brug.
So I just wanted to respond to the document. I have to say, it's not a document that I was familiar with until it was raised to my attention. And as a council member who chairs the Economic Development Committee of the council, I don't think the committee ever saw it, to my knowledge. And I'm happy to be corrected if that was the case, where we did see it. Did we see that document?
It was definitely presented to council at some point in a work session, I believe.
Yeah, I believe that the comparison spreadsheet was done, it was completed in May 2015, and I emailed out basically what those documents were, and they've been placed on the, on the city web, website. The, there are, and I can, I can put them up here on the...
Yeah, well, the document that I'm familiar with is the comparison sheet that sort of shows each project and the generation revenue. What I hadn't seen is sort of the pros document that would have been pulled from this. So this, that document, that document we've all seen.
Right. So this is the basic chart, which is prepared and updated each year.
But I think the, as I understand it, the document that's in question is not this document.
That is correct. The document that's in question, if I... Go back just a second. What I don't understand is why there's not just a back button here. So I'll show the, I'll show the basic library of the documents that are posted today. So on the Economic Development webpage, there are a number of things you can look at, Business Incentives, Data Center, et cetera. And under News and Reports, there's some, you know, some press coverage and things like that. But this is the area where the Mixed Use Development Fiscal Impact Updates are posted. And so the chart is here, I'm sorry.
This is the document?
Right. It's right here. And so the comparison spreadsheet is right here, the notes to them are right here, this is a chart of the VCs and the community benefits, and then this document here is the one that's being discussed.
So on that document, has that been presented to council before? Because I do not recall seeing that particular document.
I don't recall if this one has or not. I know that the first three have, because I've seen that one.
So, Mr. Shields, I would ask that we get a better understanding of where that came from, or whether there were specific requests for that document to be generated, and what the genesis of that is. And the reason why I'm troubled with this is that in one of our recent meetings, I know that I had gone at length, not just on one occasion, but on several occasions, on what is our absorption rate, and about the issues with the model, of it not capturing the capital costs that we're going to see with additional residents in the city outside of schools, such as parks, library, et cetera. And I went on at some length about the model being a little dated, because it doesn't capture that information, and now we're trying to put it in our standard proffer packages. And then out comes this document, which I had never seen before, that, you know, and again, I don't want to take judgment with this document, but it doesn't even sort of show sort of the limitations of the model. And, you know, there's one thing to have that comparison data, where it's just the data versus this pro. So I've got significant concerns with that document, and frankly, I was a bit surprised by it, that it had never been presented to the Economic Development Committee, and we had sort of always seen the chart, which, you know, had its limitations, but at least one that I was, you know, knew about, sort of knew the numbers, versus this pro document. So I'd like to get a better sense of how this came about, who drafted it, and who asked for it, if anybody, whether it be the council, or, you know, it was just the EDO's initiative. I want to get a better sense of that.
Okay.
It just is, and again, I say that with all due respect, because normally, it's, we get the straight numbers, not a lot of gloss from the EDO office, and that's sort of historically how that office has been run. It's been very factual, very, here are the numbers, and you can sort of question the numbers and all that. And all of a sudden, I learn about sort of a pros document, which attempts to put the numbers in context, and I've never seen that come out of that office before. And I've never seen that come out of that office before in this way. So I find it troubling because it misses a whole rest of the pie, and it's very one-sided, on the heels of comments that I made and others made about sort of where are we going with this model, that it's not capturing everything. And I learned about this document. So I'd like to get a sense of where it's at, and until we get that, I'd like to see this document pulled. It's not one that I place any value in.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your comments about the EDO's work product, and I know there's a great deal of dedication to try to present the numbers in a straightforward way, in the way that the model works. And so we will look at this one. Again, I don't have the answers right now tonight in terms of the genesis of this document. The other three that I was referencing, I am familiar with in a much more detailed way and have read them very closely.
Let me ask my fellow councilmembers this. Had anybody else seen that particular document?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
This doesn't seem like a big mystery to me. I remember multiple conversations going back several years, including during the last budget discussions about how the Economic Development Office needed more capacity to tell the story of the city's efforts and success. I believe we hired an additional person whose specific job is to build a website and work on communications, to sort of put some, I think is described as pros to the numbers, which attempts to put the numbers in context. Doesn't seem like a shocking or illegitimate mission to me. And so my understanding at work sessions of the council, I don't know, I can't remember which specific meetings, was that this document emerged as just that, just a way to put some pros and context to the chart, which we've all seen many times, and all of us have a bit of difficulty plowing through, and certainly anybody who's not familiar with it does. I mean, I'm just puzzled as to why this comes as a big surprise to people who are, you know, follow these things closely. I mean, not to get into the discussion of whether any of the work that the Economic Development Office does is legitimate or not, because the discussion of that is, that's the meeting that we're having here Thursday, the candidates debate. The information that's on the chart is what is put in context by that document. And so if you don't agree with the information on the chart, if you don't agree with the numbers that go into it and they're behind it, that's, you know, it's an interesting conversation to have, and we should have that. But to somehow construe this as some rogue document is just very peculiar, and I believe incorrect. There's nobody here from the EDO, I think, to speak to this. My understanding is that they're always working to perfect the model. The meeting of the EDA and the retreat that they had on Saturday, again, it was said that the EDO is working to perfect the model, bring new data into it, new tax rates, new assessments, some of these questions about capital costs. I mean, we're always working to perfect the model. I don't know, this just seems like there's much ado about an effort to explain to the people, again, to put numbers into context. I mean, I thought that that's what communications was all about, trying to explain what we're doing more clearly to the people. I would not support removing an effort to make things clear to the people from our website.
One thing I will say is that the reason I called up the full page is because I wanted to note the four documents. And the three of them, I believe, have been discussed at length. The fourth one that is referenced in the letter, I don't recall actually having had that same level of discussion.
So I'm just going to renew my...
So I guess in my evaluation of it, our goal is to get information out so that it's comprehensible. And I think that the fourth document, like anything we put out, can be evaluated on that basis. So I will circle back with EDO, and we'll discuss the data and how it's being presented. And I think that's a perfectly reasonable question and one that we should always be It is my, you know, the first three, that's data that has been out since May. I stand behind that data four-square. I think it is our best analysis and best understanding of the mixed-use track record in the city, and it provides information about what the assumptions were when the projects were first considered by the City Council through the legislative process, and then how the actuals have followed on behind those. And so I think all that information is very relevant to the public, and we do try to put it out there so that it informs this type of discussion. It really needs to be data that the community then can use and discuss and inform ultimately what the future decisions of this body will be. That's its intent.
So I agree sort of with what Mr. Shields said, and I think it's important to educate our citizens about what the data means. But again, I'm troubled with the fact that we've all been familiar with the three other documents, and we've all seen it, debated it, mulled it over. But the document that seems to summarize it, I don't recall seeing in a public way before, it was pointed out to me, this fourth document, which essentially summarizes it in a way that I and others sort of have trouble with because of certain things that are missing in the model. It'd be one thing if this included sort of the limitations of the model, which we've all talked about, but it doesn't do that. There's no asterisk that says this doesn't talk about cap costs, et cetera. Big, bold, flashing numbers, on the heels of one council member specifically raising that, and it being acknowledged that the model doesn't capture it, and it's not intended to. And yet this document's still out there with no annotations, and it's appearing in various places.
Mr. Mayor?
So, you know, I asked if other council members have seen it, and you can respond to that or not respond to it, but I find it troubling that it's out there, and I think we need to discuss it at some point. Or the document should get pulled until it gets fully vetted and it's a clearer document, if that's what it needs to be. I don't have issues with pros. I have an issue with that it's summarizing various data and attempts to summarize various points that we've all have made in one way. And as far as that hire that we made or the additional funding, I had understood that position of being a way of promoting the city, of bringing additional businesses in, et cetera, not necessarily promoting the same development model that we've been doing. And I think that office has done some work. I've given them some leads of businesses that they should reach out to, and they've done that good work. And I think they have the capacity to do that. And that's how I've understood that office. And that's leads of business people that I've met outside the city to try to encourage them to get in. And I think the staff people have reached out to those business owners to say, come to Falls Church, we're a great place, and given them the package. This is not what I'm expecting from that office.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. And let's start winding this conversation down as well. But go ahead, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. Perhaps we can all agree that the manager's suggestion that he will analyze the document and see if it matches up with the data which underlies it would be the first step. Obviously, if there's some disconnect between the data and the chart, with which we're all familiar, and the data and the pros document, if there's some mismatch or disconnect, then certainly we would want that to be corrected. My understanding, and perhaps Ms. Conley can back me up here, I believe she's the council's liaison to the Economic Development Committee, is that the EDC under Chairman Novotny worked, I'm sorry, the EDA, thank you, Mr. Conley, under Chairman Novotny, worked on this with staff, discussed it at multiple meetings. Certainly that's where I first heard of it, I believe, just attending those meetings as an observer over the last, I don't know, five or six months. I can't remember how far back. That's the process that produced this attempt to put the numbers on the chart in some context. So that's just for public information. I mean, they were discussed at multiple public meetings of the Economic Development Authority. That's my recollection.
Okay. So why don't we try to wrap this up? I think this document is not intended to be abdicating a position, but merely stating facts. I presume that's essentially what the idea behind this is, and I think that's what it needs to be doing. I think also disclosing its limitations is appropriate to the extent it analyzes certain data but doesn't analyze other data. I think something you should also give consideration to in terms of just letting people know what in fact was taken into account and not taken into account, the limitations of the model. But as you already suggested already, I think maybe having you with the EDO staff reevaluate this and see if there are any changes that are appropriate for this document, probably be a good idea. And then maybe you could bring back to council or send an email or somehow let us know what your conclusions are. Does that sound like a reasonable way to proceed with this?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And our approach is to get as much information out as possible, and so we will do that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. Does that include the city manager responding to each and every one of the technical points that have been made by the citizens about the model?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. So are there any council requests? If not, why don't we go and take a five-minute break, as requested earlier? Are there any council requests? Okay. So why don't we take a five-minute break? We'll reconvene at approximately 9:37 or so. Thank you all. And then we're going to fly through the rest of the agenda, okay? We're going to move, we're going to pick up the pace here. We're going to move, we're going to pick up the pace here. Let's go ahead and resume our hearing if we could. Thank you all for coming out, but if you could either take your places, or if you're leaving, head quietly out the door, we'd certainly appreciate it. Let's go on to the report of the city manager, and let's, if we can, make the rest of this hearing as quick-moving as possible, because we've lingered the first part. So, Mr. Shields, do you have anything to say?
I have a very lengthy report. I did want to just share with council a couple of things that are going on around town. It's been the, I don't know if anyone has noticed, but there's a lot of activity in the construction realm in the city, and there are big projects, obviously, in the private sector, and there have been big stormwater projects and school projects, but I just wanted to give a quick update on some of the other capital projects. One, on the Southwest Street project, we have finished, just finished today, Phase Two of the road bed reclamation project, and we're starting the Phase Three, which will require road closures from Fowler up to just about Parker, and we'll have a new detour route that'll be on the other side of Southwest Street. But we're making good progress in that project and look forward to moving that towards completion. For the public, we've had the road closure signs, the detours have actually worked, and I really want to thank all of the neighborhoods that have dealt with high loads of traffic and for the traveling public, but we'll have a nice road when this project is over. We did have the public meeting on the markings. I will get staff recommendations on the, what really came out of the last public meeting a week and a half ago. We'll communicate that out to the council and to the public. We'll allow a chance just for some final public comment on that, and then we'll proceed with the markings as soon as the paving is over. What we believe that we'll be going in the direction of is having on-street parking and the sharos for bicycles, but we'll finalize that very soon. The traffic calming at Parker and Kent is under construction now. The West End Park sign is up, and the skate feature is open, and I don't know about you, but I've been getting lots of compliments from teenagers who are using it. The grand opening for the park is going to be on Sunday, October 11th, at 4:30 p.m., and the park has a lot to celebrate in it. And here are the skate features that are being used basically every afternoon, it's a great time of year for it. This is the bike rack. The new bridge across the Howard Herman and Harvard Herman Stream Valley Park is in, so now you can walk from Rollin Street over to the trail, and we are not planning a grand opening for this park. We want the vegetation to grow in a little bit, and Wrecking Parks Advisory Board is wants to do some other improvements in the park and then have a grand opening probably in the spring. In a smaller scale, for those who walk the Cavalier Trail, you may have noticed over the past couple of years, the roots have pushed up the asphalt and made for a hazardous situation. Using our in-house staff led by Sam Stribling, who runs our asphalt crew, we've made a number of repairs. We fixed many of the wooden slats in the bridge and put in a lot of spot repairs on these trails. They're very smooth, very walkable, and they did it in a very cost-effective way, too. They didn't take out the whole trail, they kept what was working just fine and fixed the areas that are damaged. They also did these repairs in Madison Park, right near the retirement home there. And lastly, just one little other spot improvement, some bike racks in. Want to thank CVS for, without really a whole lot of to-do, granting us access onto their property to put in these bike racks, and again, thanks to our Public Works crews who put those in. And then our OCOM is getting these, you know, they're always out taking pictures and updating things on Instagram and Facebook and Twitter and trying to get the word out to the public about the improvements that are happening, and we'll keep on with this type of reports, particularly as the fall construction season winds up. So I just wanted to share that with council, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Actually, go ahead. I'll start.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about something you didn't mention, which is, we've been getting a lot of emails from St. James parishioners.
Yes.
And I'm wondering when we're going to, the question I have, well, I've got two. One, the justification for making Spring Street two ways as opposed to one. A lot of safety concerns, they seem to be legitimate. The second one is how best to manage the on-street parking capability in a fair way. I live in an area where there's a large church, and I park in front of my driveway, and that seems to deal with some of the issues that I might otherwise have, but I'm just, and we don't, again, this is late, but I think, I think we've been getting a lot of emails. I know we've all been reading every one of them, so I want to know what's going to happen next.
Yes, we have been getting lots of communication from neighbors and from parishioners. In terms of a little bit of background, of course, we've got a petition about a year ago from the neighbors asking for parking restrictions on the street, and those parking, the petition to the city included parking, resident-only parking restrictions on the weekend and on Sundays and on hours after 5:00 p.m. And so we have looked at it. It meets the basic criteria that are under the city code for such residential parking regulations, and I've asked the neighborhood for time to allow us to work with the church, and they have concerns about those parking regulations, and they have asked for some time to work through those with us, and we certainly are open to doing that. And there's also been a lot of dialogue, I think more recently, between the neighborhood and the church, and that's a very positive thing. As we were having those discussions with the church, we did raise the fact that in the draft West Broad Street area plan, there's a recommendation that Spring Street eventually be turned into a two-way street. And the reason for that is that if you look at the city's grid, Spring Street is a very important part of our grid, and it's also a signalized intersection, and it's one that could help distribute the load from traffic, now regardless of whether there's new development in the opportunity area. Even today, it would help distribute that traffic. I think there's also cases that could be made, that the one-way configuration, because it's so wide open to the traveling public, that they tend to speed on the street, and there are many anecdotal examples of cars passing each other on Spring Street. A lot of times, traffic will actually travel the wrong way down Spring Street because it doesn't sort of present itself as a one-way street as visibly as perhaps it could. And so there are some safety concerns today. Immediately, what we're doing is putting in a raised pedestrian crossing to assist the church with getting children to and from Mass, which they do on a daily basis, and so that will be an immediate safety concern. So at this point, really, all we did was initiate a discussion with St. James, that this is in the recommendations in the area plan. There's no intention to immediately enact two-way, but we wanted to have the discussion, and the church has expressed their concerns from a safety perspective. We respect those. We certainly would consider them thoroughly before making any change, and there is no imminent plans to make any change to the status of Spring Street. And so that's the status. I think probably the top priority is to resolve these parking concerns, and I hope to do so in coordination with the church and with the neighbors soon, i.e. in the next month timeframe. The two-way issue is a longer-term issue, as I see it. So that's what I have to report on the matter.
Okay, thanks a lot for that report. I know I'd like to respond to each and every one of the emails, it's difficult to do that, so maybe you can provide the information to us in a way that we can respond more effectively than we've been able to do so far, and I think the notion of dialogue is very important. I know there was a lot of dialogue with Columbia Baptist Church in the neighborhood, and we finally worked things out pretty well, so, thanks.
Okay, let's keep on moving.
Mr. Mayor, just, I don't know when you want to do this on the agenda, but Mr. Shields had sent a note out to council requesting views regarding Mason Row, so I felt that it was important for me to at least reiterate some of the comments that I had with my fellow council members, but most, more importantly, with the public. So I didn't know how other council members felt, but I just think that we need to, you know, I think the questions that were posed were spot-on, but I think that they need to happen in a public forum and with each other and on the record, so I'm happy to do that. So I don't know what other council members thinking is, whether we do that tonight at the end, or now, or whenever, but...
Yes, sir. Go, Ms. Conley.
I wasn't thinking that. I thought we've already shared our opinions, and Mr. Shields was trying to encapsulate them all into a written document or something to be able to share. I didn't realize there was going to be a verbal sharing, resharing of our thoughts.
Well, if there is, my recommendation would be that be at the end of the meeting, and we could get through the business on the agenda, and then if there's a desire to have that conversation, I'll take very close notes of what, any comments that are made.
Okay, so, and if, you're welcome to do that, if you'd like, at the end, Mr. Baruch, and for those who feel like they've already made their comments, then so be it.
I mean, I didn't feel necessarily that I wanted to make comments, because I've already made them publicly before, but if other members felt that they wanted to share comments with Mr. Shields, I wanted to hear those comments, and I think the public should hear those comments as well. So I feel like I've said my piece on the issue, but if other members have responded to Mr. Shields, I'd like to know what those comments are, and I think the public should know what those comments are.
Well, I mean, I think the idea behind this, to my understanding, was for Mr. Shields to have essentially a better summary of the comments that maybe he's taken at some of these public hearings. I suspect the comments that were made to Mr. Shields are consistent with the comments that were made publicly, but maybe there's more in-depth or more detailed comments, and I guess that would be for the members of council to decide whether they want to share those publicly or not. It'd certainly be up to them. Obviously, people could foresee the response if they really were interested, but I suspect that most people have made the same comments to him than they did publicly, but at the end of this meeting, if you'd like, we can discuss it maybe further. It's almost 10, and we haven't even got to the business on the agenda. Why don't we try to bang out those things, which hopefully won't take too long, and then we could try to figure out if we want to get into Mason Row either tonight or at some later point in more detail. Why don't we go on, if that's okay with everybody, just go on to the business of the agenda and try to knock out the items that are here for action of some sort or the other. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
Yes, TO 15-11, Ordinance to amend Chapter Eight, Article Six of the Code of the City of Falls Church, Private Schools, Special Schools, and Home Child Care Facilities.
Thank you, welcome. Thanks for sticking around.
I do want to thank Nancy Vincent and Sue Richter for being here for this item. It's actually a pretty simple item, and it was discussed at work session, but Nancy, if you have any additional comments you want to make on the item?
Don't feel to compel, be compelled to give your full presentation. If you can summarize it, go for it.
This is the summary. The Fairfax County Board of Supervisors passed an update to their child code ordinance on July 28th, and since the city contracts with the Fairfax County Office for Children for Services, then the city must bring its code into conformance with theirs. The proposed amendment reduces the time in which background checks are conducted from every five to every three years, which is in line with the state requirement. A central criminal record search is conducted for each applicant and adult residing in the home. Based on the information in the report, the Fairfax County Office for Children determines whether there are any barrier fence convictions that would prevent the issuance of a home daycare permit. The amendment also deletes any obsolete language. Sue Richter, who is here, notified the home daycare providers of the changes and the dates of the public hearings, and the providers were also notified by Fairfax County of the changes. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Any comments? Yes.
How many providers are there that are affected by this?
There's five in the city.
All home daycares, or private schools, or?
There are five home daycare providers.
Five home daycares, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this matter? Seen none, the matter is closed to the public. Is there a motion anyone wishes to make?
I move to grant first reading to TO 15-11 and schedule a public hearing and second hearing, second reading for October 13th, 2015, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, why don't we move on to the next item? Thank you. Thanks for sticking around.
Mr. Collins has two items. Do you want to come forward on that?
We have TR 15-23, Resolution to authorize projects under VDOT's Revenue Sharing Program for FY 2017, and TR 15-24, Resolution to endorse the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2017 application for HB2 funding.
Per the mayor's suggestion to keep it short, this is some grant funding from VDOT. We need a resolution to pass it, and it's consistent with the CIP and a number of plans that are already adopted.
Do we have any questions or comments from Mr. Collins? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this matter? Seen none, the matter is closed to the public. You have a question? Ms. Conley has a question for you.
Quick question. On TR 15-23, it's the Roosevelt Boulevard and Van Buren Bridge funding. It says that's going to be coming in 2017. Does that mean the project won't start until fiscal year 2017?
The Roosevelt Boulevard project will start construction next spring, so FY 16. We have some money on the books for it already. Likewise, Van Buren's already in design. I believe construction is scheduled in FY 17, but both of those are, we've begun preliminary work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TR 15-23.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. And the next item?
Called it, but it's TR 15-24, Resolution to endorse the City of Falls Church Fiscal Year 2017 application for HB2 funding.
Anything, Mr. Collins, you want to add? Okay. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this matter? Seen none, the matter is closed to the public. Are there any questions or comments from council? Ms. Conley? Okay. Is there a motion anyone would like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TR 15-24.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Great.
There are two items on the consent calendar. The first is authorization.
Shields, just before that, I know that these are both, the Shields, just before that, I know that these are, both of the items that we talked about before are Virginia State grants, but if anything, it's also in relation to those going to the federal government. I would just remind staff my name shouldn't be included in that, along with anything dealing with I-66 that goes to the federal government as well. Thank you.
Okay.
There are two items on the consent calendar. The first is authorization for the city manager to sign agreements for an initial term of one year on behalf of the city for architectural and facilities engineering services with BKV Group, Studio 27 Architecture, Robert E. Beach Architects, and Gothier Alvarado and Associates, and renew these contracts annually for four years, subject to annual appropriation of funds, which would be done through the annual budget process. This was discussed at the work session last week, and it would be engineering services for city facilities. The next item is the resolution adopting a policy for electronic participation in meetings by the city council members. This also was discussed in work session last week. And the only other thing on the agenda, I believe, are the minutes, but those aren't on the consent. I think they're adopted separately. So there's the two items.
Okay, are there any comments or questions about the two items on the consent agenda?
Just one point on the second consent agenda on the electronic. I think we had some discussion about just ensuring that whoever the member isn't, that isn't present, the minutes capture whatever that they're saying. And I don't see that directly in there, unless I missed it, Carol?
I did not put that in as a change to the policy.
And I don't think it needs to be there, but it just, that should just be understood.
Right. And I didn't, I didn't understand that we wanted that as an addition to the policy, but it is understood.
I just wanted the record to be clear that that's the understanding.
Yes.
Nothing further from me.
Vice Mayor Snyder? Thank you. And I also understand that one of the personal reasons for not being at a meeting would be out-of-town, business-related travel.
That's correct.
And I understand that we are exercising the authority and know more than the authority we're given under state law in this area. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address these matters? Seen none, the matter is closed to the public. Madam, or is there a motion to, motion for anything? Motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Yes. Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Great, okay. Let's go on to, are there any council member comments? I know we heard briefly about Mason Row. Is there any other council member comments? Okay, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just on Mason Row, I raised two points. One, the extent of the residential component of the project and the lack of diversity in that component in terms of senior housing or condos or microunits. And the second point I raised was the absence of specificity with regard to the commercial components, how much we're really going to get, what type of occupancies, things like that need to be solidified and made generally, I think, satisfactory to the community. Finally, the, I didn't raise it specifically in the email, but the other issues about massing and that sort of thing are things that we need to continue to work on. But I really focused on two. The residential component, is it right? Is it too much? And secondly, the commercial component, the lack of specificity and assurance of the revenue return and the type of occupancies, which I think is consistent with the comments about needing a better retail plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baruch?
So I didn't raise anything in an email, other than I was going to raise my comments tonight on Mason Row, but I still stand behind the motion that I put forward that the council, I believe unanimously adopted. I believe it was at the first first reading. So I believe those are still valid. I think it was a list of 10 items. And then I tried to narrow that list down in a motion that wasn't a formal motion, because a request was put forward to carry a clean motion. So I think the record is there. I tried to outline that. I think that was whittled down to about five points, perhaps, or perhaps 10. I don't remember the exact number. So I still stand behind those items, and those are on the record on what I think was the first, second, no, the first, no, the second first reading, if you will.
First first reading?
No, well, whatever it was, there was two big hearings on it.
There was a motion on August 10th, and that had five points. And then there was comments made in February, when the council did the second first reading. That was not adopted by the council, but we do have those on the record.
Great, thank you. So you've got those two sets. So I still stand behind those. The big ones for me that, again, not the only, but if we're looking at sort of the two, how I would pull them together is the residential density needs to be significantly reduced. And then two, on the commercial piece, there needs to be guarantees in place. I proposed a couple ideas, which apparently have been balked at by the developer. One's Assuredy Bonds, which they, I understand that they balked at and said, "No, go." But they haven't come back with anything else. And they haven't, to my knowledge, in the VCs, basically said that they are going to build the hotel shell first before they move to the residential. And to me, that's disaster. I mean, if the council does not put that into place, I think that would be a tremendous error in not requiring the hotel at minimum to get built first. And you all know my trepidations about this project to begin with, but I would implore you to a minimum demand that the hotel get built first before they can begin construction on the residential. Because they will be able to make the residential work, and the hotel, they may be spinning off to other partners, and that may never get built. So, depending on where other members are, to my understanding, that's not in the VCs right now. And that should have been a starting point, and it's not unique. We've done that before to try to tie projects together. And my understanding is that the garage, or I'm sorry, that the hotel is not necessarily being agreed, or I'm sorry, the theater piece of it is not necessarily being agreed to be built first before any of the other components. So, there's a lot of ways to skin that cat, to try to get the commercial guarantees into place. Assuredy Bonds is one, building phasing is another. And right now, what they've proposed is, well, they won't get their building permits for the residential until they have signed leases. Well, I play a lawyer during the day, and leases always have exit clauses, one that we shouldn't get in the business of, but I would just implore my council members to support the notion of trying to get guarantees in the commercial pieces together if this thing is going to go forward. And I'm surprised that others, except perhaps my Snyder and I, haven't raised this issue nauseam yet.
Okay, are there other comments anyone would like to make at this time? We will be discussing this more formally as time goes on, so it's not just going to come back on the 14th of December and that be it. So, just keep that in mind as well. Okay, is there any other council member comments that folks want to make right now? Okay. Why don't we go on to the meeting minutes? Is there any comments, corrections to the meeting minutes of July 13th, 2015, anyone would like to make?
Mr. Mayor? I'm abstained, since I wasn't here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Compliments to the clerk for her usual excellent good job on line 257 and 266. There are stray Ts that have floated in there for some reason. Otherwise, I found nothing.
That was just for you.
Just to see if I'm paying attention. Stray what? Ts. There's like, there's a T, and there's a T. Anyway, with that, unless there's somebody else, I would move adoption, approval of the minutes for July 13th, 2015, as revised.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
One abstention.
Opposed, none, and one abstention. Okay, the ayes have it. Is there anything else we should be talking about tonight, or should we go ahead and move to adjourn? Okay.
There was an invitation that went out to the whole community today to attend a community forum on Saturday, October 17th. It's going to be at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. It's going to be about the school of the future. There are some architects, sustainability people, and other school designers that are going to be there to talk about everything that should be in a school of the future. There'll be an opportunity for community input to find out what are the priorities of the community. So this is the next in a series of information gathering events.
Great.
And an email went out to all council members. It's also on the school website, and I hope many people in the community attend, especially those with young children, who will be the ones that benefit from a new high school.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, we had gotten a question from a citizen about a similar visioning process for the city. There was some email exchange over the course of the summer, and nothing, we obviously need to do any more detail tonight, but interested in that. And this would be the second visioning session in a year or so that the schools have done, so.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody has to say? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you all.